I call this meeting the Northeast Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to discuss personnel or to hear complaints against personnel. And Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And the time is 5:31. The board will now reconvene into open session. The time is 6:37. I guess now I have to keep going, don't I? Item four, matters from executive session. A, personnel including but not limited to administrative appointments pursuant to Government Code, Section 551.074. Possible action regarding routine personnel, including, I'm sorry, item one, possible action regarding routine personnel, including but not limited to administrative appointments. Mr. Jimenez. No, I guess I just go into it.
Yes, sir.
A, Assistant Principal of Churchill High School. Do I have a motion as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
If I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Item passes. Item B, Assistant Principal of International School of the Americas. Do I have a motion to approve as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Item C, Assistant Principal of Legacy of Educational Excellence High School. Do I have a motion to approve as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Ah, yes. Got it. And item D, Assistant Principal of Tahata Middle School.
I need to recuse myself.
Let the record reflect that Ms. Chidji is recusing herself from this discussion item. Do I have a motion to approve as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Landry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mrs. Villarreal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Item five, presentation, Internal Audit Department Quarterly Board Report. Mrs. Schussman.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow trustees, Dr. Mica, executive staff, and guests. Good to see you again. Tonight I present to you the Internal Audit Department's quarterly update for our audit work that my team and I have completed since our last update, which was February 19th. For tonight's quarterly update, there are three completed audits up for discussion, which you can see in your handout. A notable difference to the quarterly update tonight is the reverse order of the presentation. So just for note for the record, we met in closed session first this evening and reviewed specific details of some audits that you wish to discuss, as well as any questions that you had regarding the fraud hotline. Now here in open session, we're going to do it in reverse, and I'm happy to discuss the highlights of any audits, answer any questions here that are appropriate to discuss in open session. And then at the end, I'll give you a brief update on the audit work that's currently in progress and projects that are on the horizon. So with that, do you have any questions about the three audits that we can discuss out here?
And we'll start with Kruger Middle School. Does anybody have any questions? One of our colleagues who's not able to be here this evening does have some questions about Kruger, if nobody else has any questions. So she has them broken down by finding, am I going to read these?
Okay.
And that way, we have them on the record.
Sure.
And we can go back and watch the video to get her answers.
Sure.
Or if we need to get an email, but I want to make sure these are for her. First one is define SAF and CAF.
That is student account funds and campus account funds.
Thank you. Under finding one.
Mr. Byer, actually, student activity funds.
Yes, sir.
Campus activity funds.
Yes, sir.
You said account.
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay.
Yes, activity funds, yes. My apologies.
Under finding one, she asked what or whose signatures are required on a check?
So the finding, I believe, is talking about... And there isn't a finding about that, but I can answer that. The check can be signed by the principal, and there might be a couple of other designated folks to sign the check at a campus.
And I think she listed by finding, meaning that that's how they're...
Sure, no, 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 I understand.
Even though there might not be a finding.
Sure.
Under finding two, as she defined, what are the circumstances that led 24 percent of the deposits being held, not deposited in a timely manner? Is there a general response to that?
In this case, deposits that were found, these nine deposits, were held anywhere between eight to 21 days from the time that the sponsor received the money from students, essentially. There's a number of reasons why that could happen. A kiddo could keep their check from mom and dad in their backpack for a few extra days before they give it to the teacher. They lose it, it gets stuck in their locker, and there's a lot of things on that end. Then the teacher receives the payments from the students, from, you know, for a sale or for t-shirts, whatever it was for. The teacher is accumulating those checks for a few days. Possibly they're out, you know, there's a number of things there, and it moves on through to the bookkeeper. So I'll say in general, the rule that our district assigns to accepting of deposits is, and I quote, "at least weekly deposit should be made." So we go by weekly. So anything past seven days, we consider that to be a late or untimely deposit. And that would be from the date on a check. So mom writes the check, and by the time it gets to the bookkeeper, you know, how long did that take? So in general, I'd say this eight to 21 days, I've seen way, I've seen months, deposits take months to get in. But officially, those were past the seven days, and so therefore, there were nine.
And the last one, we're talking about finding four, I guess the last item in the report. I guess she inferred that the, some items were paid for, the school agreed to pay for items in advance of, in advance of receiving approval. And I guess the question is who has the authority to, I guess, who would have the authority to approve those things? Or who would have the authority to go ahead and make a purchase in advance without, without receiving approval?
I'm reading the report here real quick so I can make sure. Seeing how many. I do not have the specifics of these transactions with me. If I recall, and I don't have it here in the report, but I recall in my review, it was a matter of days on these situations between the date of the purchase order and the date of the invoice. I could definitely, you know, get that for you. In this case, a request for payment is what should happen. There is a procedure within the district in those cases where we do not have that purchase order in time. There is a process that is in place to request payment for something, and that is the suggested format that should occur. And in that case, the process can proceed just as normal. And also in these instances, if, my auditor did not make a note here that what was purchased was in question. And we always look in those cases, if the purchase is out of order, essentially, and that the budget manager did not make that approval ahead. We look to see what was purchased. Is anything else wrong with this transaction, other than just the timing of the signature happening? And that was not the case. So I don't know if that helps matters any there, but...
And I will talk to Ms. Shelton and maybe provide this email so you all can give her some of these responses as well.
Sure.
So she has them for future. So that's all. Anybody else have any questions about Kruger? How about the CRMS or capital asset inventory? And we talked about employee conflict of interest review, and I guess if you want to go through the other items you have.
Sure thing. Alrighty, so the last one, again, thank you for your questions back there and out here, I appreciate it. Currently, we'll skip down to the continuous monitoring, the second section. We always, my department monitors our campuses' cash collection and their safe inventories by doing unannounced cash counts. We go out at particular times throughout the week or month and show up and do a surprise count, just like you would think of at a bank. You know, their vault gets cash counted. We were able to do one of those cash counts this quarter. I'll say just something happy for our department. I had one of our employees retired after 37 years, so we've been short someone. We have since brought in our audit technician, and she's on board and being trained right now, and so you'll see that number pop back up. Typically, we do more than that in a quarter. Just didn't have that person there to do that. But we did perform one cash count, and everything was good with that. It was a middle school campus, and everything was fine with that cash count. We talked about the fraud hotline back in the back. And then current work in progress right now. Bradley Middle School is the last of our campuses to be audited this year. They experienced a principal change. When we have any key personnel change on a campus, specifically, that would be the principal and the bookkeeper. Those two toggle up a campus to the top of the list to get an audit for the school year, if possible. If there's enough personnel and enough time in the schedule to do that. Bradley was the last one to occur this year, and my auditor is actually just finishing the report today. You'll receive that forthcoming, and the results are looking good for that. The second one on the list here, Johnson High School Dance Program Review. That is just in the beginning now, I'm in the testing phase, I'm running that audit. So you'll can see that coming through in the coming couple of months. And then in the planning phases, the last, the last full audit that we do at the very end of the school year is our annual warehouse inventories. So this is something, all of our four major warehouses throughout the district. We do a random select, a sample of items in those. And all of those inventory results go to our external auditors that we talked about briefly back there. Our external auditors actually use that data for their, for their work as well. So we're about to conduct those, we have to wait till the school year ends. We do it right at a certain time when everything kind of dies down for a day or two, and we can stop activity in those warehouses and actually do an inventory. And so that's coming up at the next week in early June is when all of those are happening. And then lastly, at the end of the school year in June, bank confirmations, that's another thing that we do for the external auditors, that's on the horizon. Where we confirm with all of our banking institutions that we have our accounts, we send out, we prepare letters on behalf of our external auditors and send that out. And then, again, I mentioned briefly in the back, be preparing that audit plan. So we'll be back here in August to tell you about the next year and a glance of what that looks like for the Internal Audit Department. Any questions about any of that? If not, I thank you for your time. Appreciate it so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, nice to see you all.
All right, item six, Board President comments. I want to take a minute, first of all, to welcome everybody to the newly installed Board of Trustees. I did want to say Ms. Tracy Shelton was not able to be here this evening, unfortunately. Well, fortunately, her daughter is graduating from LSU, and so she had a pressing family business to be at, including her daughter's graduation. So she sends her regards, and we'll be here at the next meeting. But I do want to welcome everybody and let everybody know that, you know, we all, seven of us, have equal voices on this board. And so you represent your community. We work together for the new people, ask questions, try to intersperse ourselves so that if we have something that we need to discuss or talk about, or you have a problem. Hopefully, the three of us that have been on for a couple of years can help you. If not, we can get you to the right person. We do have a busy summer coming up. Graduation's next weekend, you'll get your information. I'm also going to send out an email, just kind of giving the, sort of the board take on where we go, how we're going to sit, all those kinds of things. So we'll, we'll talk about that. Summer leadership, which is a TASB program, happens here in San Antonio, we'll be getting information about that. That's, I don't have the dates on that. I forgot what they are. But we'll, Ms. Turner will be sure to let everybody know. And it's generally a time to get your continuing education and go kind of mingle with other school board members from across the state. At the, near the end of the summer, right before school starts, we'll have leadership starting back up, we'll have convocations. And so all of those things will be taken care of through Mrs. Turner. She's already been sending emails to get attendance items, who's going to be there. One thing that I do want to say, and our previous board president had a lot of time to do the things that I may not have time to do. And so as a collective board, I would like to make sure that, I'll do my best to get to events, but I want to make sure that we have at least one person represented from this group. And so as we go through it, things that I know I will not be able to get to, I'll make sure you know that. And then that way, if somebody can jump on it and go represent our group, would be fantastic. So I do have a job that, where I have to get some money made, so this is not it. But no, we want to make sure that we're there and we're out in the community and that we're visible, so do that. If you get any concerns from the community, please forward those to Dr. Mica. I know a couple of that's come up a couple of times. If you get an individual concern, if it's addressed to the entire board, I will, I will respond to that in kind. And last thing I want to say is, I had Dr. Mica print out a copy of the balance district scorecard for everybody and leave it at your place. There was a lot of, several, a couple of years' worth of work put into this, and it's still continuing from the staff, executive staff, and Dr. Mica, and the rest of the central office. And so keep it handy, it's a good thing to reference, take a look at. It has all of our objectives and priorities, and then, and then kind of what has been, what we've been looking at with the long-term outlooks or outcomes. So keep it in a folder, if you just want to leave it here at the dais, you're welcome to just leave it at your seat. But I thought it'd be a nice tool for all of us to have handy when needed.
And Mr. Byer, if I may just add, what I would encourage you is to go to the board webpage on our website. Because on this document, you can't really see it, but there are hyperlinks. So for those of you that were here, you know, we started putting in measurements and things like that, so you can now go in. You'll see a number that's in blue. If you click on it, you will either see the process or the data that we're using to track to make sure that we're hitting our markers. So that document's not live, it's just a very static one, but I would encourage you to go on there. We've continued to add and continue to update to the, to the district balance scorecard. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Oh, and I'll also say, just if anybody calls me Madam President, that's fine. It's been multiple years of Madam President, I'll take it, I'm fine. It's all right. So, Mr. President's fine, Mr. Byer, whatever. But Madam President is allowable. All right, that's all I had there. Item seven, Board Business. A, Discussion on Possible Action to Appoint Non-Voting Member Representative to the School Health Advisory Council. This came up after the departure of a previous trustee who was our board liaison to the SHAC. And to, I guess, finish out the year, I was going to make a proposal with this that I could fulfill that role for the, it's basically for the next month. And there's a meeting coming up Wednesday, and then there's some other things. But since this is a discussion item, I'm happy to discuss how we want to do this, just because we're going to have to come back before the start of the school year with our recommendations for committee members to fill the spots that are rolling off. And at that time, we could then have the discussion to appoint somebody that then would fill out the actual school year for next year. Because we try to rotate that position throughout, for each school year. So I thought it might be, I guess, easy in the next month, just to have me attend those and have that continuity, and then can report back to the board as we need to. But again, I'm open to suggestions or discussion about that before we move on.
Well, how many positions? Aren't you currently serving on two positions on the SHAC committee right now?
I am not.
You're not?
No, I had expressed interest last school year to be the liaison, and then we voted Mr. Hilliard to be the liaison. And so I'm...
But aren't you on the safety committee or something?
The, it's, the Safety and Security Committee meets once a quarter.
Okay.
And that's not coming up in the next month. Between now and the end of June. That won't be a, that won't be a conflict. So that's the only other thing that I'm on. And we, and in that situation, we're going to need a new person with that as well, when the time comes. So before that meeting comes up, we'll have to put that on an agenda item to discuss.
I was kind of, sorry, I interrupted.
That's okay, nothing to find.
No, I was kind of thinking that it might be nice if Ms. Landry would actually take that position for this next month. She's highly detailed, she, the woman knows her stuff. And she would be a huge asset. And with you now being the board president, you're going to have a lot of extra duties that you're going to need to be, you know, to get us all organized and everything. And I think Ms. Landry would be wonderful in that position for this next month.
I wouldn't mind having the opportunity, if it would, if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, I know we have, what, a meeting Wednesday? And then, is there one in June? I'm trying to remember if they have one more meeting in June. Do we know? I don't have it off the top of my head.
I believe there was discussion last meeting about possibly having one in June to finish up some curriculum, I think.
If needed.
If needed, yes, sir.
So if anybody would like to make a motion, we can, I guess, have that discussion, or however that works. If anybody wants to put themselves out there.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Ms. Landry to fill out, or finish out this year in order for the SHAC committee, so they can continue with their work.
So I have a motion to, so I have a motion by Mrs. Landry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms., I'm sorry, a motion by Ms. Villarreal, a second by Mrs. Landry. Is there any discussion by anybody? All right, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 We had all opposed say nay. Nay. So that was, the ayes have it. Motion, what do we, five to one? Motion carries. Thank you, and bear with me with this stuff.
You're doing great.
All right. Item eight, New Business for Possible Board Action. A, Business Services. One, Possible Action Regarding Notice of Public Meeting to Discuss Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Mica, executive staff, and guests. Tonight we bring notice of public meeting that we wanted to publicize in the express news. It's our yearly notice that we put in the paper to talk about our budget adoption and proposed tax rate, even though we don't do the tax rate till August. It's a formality that we need to publicize in the paper, and we're asking for approval of that.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented in your packet?
I move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chidji. Any discussion about this item? All right, not seeing any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it, six to one. Item two, Consideration and Approval of an Order Authorizing the Issuance of Northeast Independent School District Variable Rate Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2024. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President, we're asking for approval to go out to market. I think it's June 4th. Michelle Argon with Hilltop Securities is here, in case there's any questions. But she's up there, our financial advisors, but this is just an order requesting approval, so we can go out to market. And it's remarketing some bonds that we had from last year and the year, the last few years, we've been doing yearly refundings. And we're just asking for approval to be able to do this remarketing.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented in your packet?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Chidji, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Villarreal. Is there any discussion before we... Any discussion? Do I read that now?
Yeah, so I have, so the motion was to adopt an order.
So the motion was to adopt an order authorizing the Northeast Independent School District Variable Rate Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2024, pursuant to a delegated sale as presented. With no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. The motion passes, six to zero. Item B, Operations. Possible action regarding approval of lease agreement for use of district property. Dr. Mica. And before we make any motions or voting on this, I need to recuse myself from this one.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So as we discussed in the back, Morgan's Wonderland, who we have had a lease agreement with in the past for Morgan Sports, approached us some time ago looking for a new lease agreement. And what this does is, it's almost an acre that Morgan's Wonderland would like to lease from the school district, where the shot put discus area is. That is to erect an ultra-accessible gym to be a part of the Morgan's Wonderland area over there. If the board approves this, Morgan's Wonderland agrees, one, to relocate the discus shot put area at no cost to the district. They also agree that upon construction of the ultra-accessible gym, that there will be a bathroom that is accessible from the outside. They will construct a sidewalk to that area for our spectators that we will have access to during those sporting events at no cost to the district. There also, should you approve it, they will allow, in the event of inclement weather, for our students and our staff to seek shelter there. And also is to erect a little over 12,000 lineal feet of pipe to outline our cross-country course that is at our sports park. And that would outline it, instead of the rope and the PVC pipe that we have. And that would give us an opportunity then to contact the UIL and, in an attempt to begin hosting regional cross-country up here, rather than going outside the school district. That would have a pretty good significant cost-saving to us. So it is my recommendation, and what I believe, after extensive talks with him, that this is a, my recommendation is to approve this 25-year lease agreement. Mr. Hartman and Morgan's Wonderland really have been good partners along with us for several years. We're excited about this, because our employees, once erected, will also have access to it as well. And so it... And so it meets a lot of our needs and again, there's zero cost to our district and that piece of property is very small and there's really nothing we have planned to go there. I'm open to any questions, should you have any?
Do I have a motion to approve as discussed in the executive session and? Oh, here we go, hang on. Do I have a motion to approve this lease agreement with Morgan's Wonderland?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Villarreal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Landry. Is there any discussion of this item? Ms. Shelton actually had a couple of questions that we can ask. So the maintenance of items beyond the installation, what does that look like?
Sure, so those, like anything, we would end up having to maintain it ourselves. But the discus shot put area, we are already currently taking care of. The cross-country course, we already currently take care of. So really, the only piece, now the bathroom facility and that, that is 100% on Morgan's Wonderland to take care of. The black pipe that would be installed at the, at the sports park would be ours then once installed for us to maintain.
The next question she had, I don't think has been discussed, or what is Northeast legal responsibility of any incidents that might be on the property if it's not our event?
Sure, so there's an indemnification clause in there. So we're, we are not held responsible should something happen. In that facility that is leased to him, it is, it is not ours.
And then for the cleanup section of the agreement, is Morgan's Wonderland responsible for cleanup only after their events? And who is responsible for other cleanup for other?
So I will say that Morgan's Wonderland, as, as at least my seasoned board members there's, how about that one, Ms. Landry, is that better? Okay. I'll figure out a word yet, right? But they currently, if you'll recall, maybe a year or two years ago, you all approved for some parking spaces to be used at Heroes. Not only did they, did they keep it clean, but they actually improved the area. So they, they like things to look good. They planted some trees, they cleaned up. Dr. Mitchell was involved with that. They, they did some fencing. They really did make some good improvements. So I don't anticipate us having any issue with cleanup over time. They've, they've really been, any problem we've ever had, which is very minimal, they've been very quick to address. He, Mr. Hartman really wants to be good partners with us.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. And one recused.
Y'all, when you vote, make sure you push the mic on so that we can hear you over it, okay? And you got to kind of speak into it, otherwise we, we don't capture you in the back and when Yvonne tomorrow is trying to write up minutes, she, it's hard, okay? I know, I should have said that at the beginning, so.
Motion carries, five to zero with one recused. All right, item C, consent, budget amendment number two. Do I have a motion to approve budget amendment two?
So moved.
Do I have a second? So thank you, Ms. Chigi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes, six to zero. Item number nine, presentation, a budget study number one, Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President.
Hold on one second, Mr. President, you have a speaker for this item?
Yes, we do. We have a speaker for this item. We'll get there, everybody, hang on. Matters from the floor. Trustees welcome comments from the members of the public during this time of the meeting. Generally, board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting, although members may request further information for a future agenda item on a matter raised during public comment. As explained fully in the board's written procedures for this time, the matters from the floor portion is limited to public forum. Accordingly, speakers may present on topics related to district business for up to three minutes but are not permitted to make, one, personal complaints about an individual staff or board member that should be raised during the district's grievance policies; two, a personnel action; three, a student disciplinary matter; four, a complaint about a particular student; five, or pending litigation. Any person who persists in speaking on these topics after being directed not to do so will lose the remainder of their time to speak and may lose their privilege of addressing the board in future meetings. If you sign up to speak on a specific, specific agenda item, you will call, be called up when the board reaches that item. Please remember, this is a business meeting of the board. Any person or group engaging in outbursts of any kind causing a disruption to the meeting will be warned and if they persist, will be removed from the meeting. This is to ensure that all speakers have an opportunity to make comments without interruption and that the board members are able to pay full attention to speakers without any distractions. We also welcome written comments at any time, either through email at board@neisd.net or by mail, care of the superintendent's office at 8961 Tesoro Drive, 6th floor, San Antonio, Texas, 78217.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Micah, and executive staff and guests. Welcome to the new folks.
Can you please say your name?
My name is Deborah Parrish and I was a school teacher in San Antonio District for 32 years. And I, please, my, I really, really plead with you to figure out a way to lessen that $38 million debt. I think that's something that should be foremost in all of your thoughts about the district over the next, over the years that you are, are members of this board. And I know I am so tired of getting new requests as a taxpayer to support bonds. It's just, it gets to be a real pain. And just realistically, on behalf of fellow schoolteachers, with all the inflation that's going on right now, it's, you know, they're the ones paying the tax, they're involved in paying the tax money. And they're just, still, their, their salaries, their pensions are not going up the way they should, in my opinion. But anyway, rhetorically, I was wondering if there is any way a private citizen can see the district budget of expenditures at the end of the month, say through a newsletter where they show an interest in receiving the newsletter, I'd certainly pay for such a thing, just to know what kind of attempts are being made to work on getting that, that $38 million down. And maybe somebody would spot something in, in that budget that, hey, have y'all tried this, just a different person concerned about the, the district. I know I'd love to re, also, I know I would love to receive info on any improvements in this area, in such a thing as a newsletter or on the news, or just, just to see that that is being worked on. For a retired school teacher, that is a lot of money. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Tonight, we bring you budget study session number one. I'll go over the agenda with you. Tonight, we'll be talking about the budget study session schedule, budget adoption rules, general fund revenue basics on state funding, property values and MNO taxes, 2324 revenue update, benchmarking and school nutrition services. The schedule tonight, we'll be discussing, like I said, the budget adoption rules, legislative update, there's none, revenue basics, school nutrition and benchmarking. Monday, June 3rd, we'll talk about staffing, additional allocation requests, health insurance, compensation discussion and debt service. Monday, June 10th, we'll talk about final updates, additional compensation discussion, detailed budget view, and hope to adopt on June 17th, which will be the tax rates, general fund, school nutrition fund and the debt service fund. The budget adoption rules, the district must adopt a budget by June 30th. The board must adopt budgets for the general debt, general fund, debt service fund and school nutrition services fund. The budget adoption must include a public meeting and notice of such meeting must be published on the district's website and in a local newspaper at least 10 days, but no more than 30 days prior to the meeting. And we do not adopt the tax rate at the same meeting as the budget. That will occur in August or September after the district receives a certified appraised value from the bare appraisal district. The Texas Education Agency provides the district its maximum compressed tax rate and TEA sends notice certifying the district has completed certain Chapter 49 filings. With that, I turn it over to Ms. Suzie Lackhorn, she's our executive director of finance and accounting. Suzie.
Ms. Lackhorn, just so you know, the, the monitors have gone black everywhere, so we're, they're, they're trying to, to get it pulled up. So if anybody needs help pulling it up on your iPad, let us know and we'll get it pulled up. They're working on the, the screens right now.
We can go slow and steady or we can take a pause, whatever?
Not sure we know why. Mr. Gattell looks quite frustrated right now. So I think, are, are y'all okay if we move forward? I mean, they, we can see it on the screen and so if you need, okay. Okay. Go ahead then, Ms. Lackhorn.
All right. We're going to get started with general fund revenue. This pie chart gives us just an idea of the different sources for revenue within the general fund. As you can see, we've got one really big piece there at 62.9%. That is our maintenance and operations property taxes. So this is where the bulk of our funding comes from. We're going to walk deep into property taxes here in a few minutes, but it's important to understand that this flow of resources really happens throughout a single period during the year. And so school districts, as, as you're probably very familiar with, we get those payments from the tax collector assessor and so property taxes are due January 31st. So we end up getting a lot of our revenue by this point in time in the year, by January 31st. And so that means we have to hold on to a lot of it because we still have a lot of bills to pay. We still have to have salaries and, and, you know, teachers would like to get paid in May, so it's important that we keep the, the funding and, and plan appropriately for our cash flows. The state also contributes to this. So property taxes and the state work together to get our, the bulk of our funding. And the state contributes about 26.7%. These percentages have recently changed. Last year, the state passed property tax relief. We're going to talk about that in a little bit more in-depth in a minute. But in the past, you were probably more used to seeing a higher percentage on property taxes and a lower percentage on the state. So they provided some property tax relief, that meant the state had to contribute more, so that percentage has increased. We have some TRS on behalf payments. TRS stands for the Teacher Retirement System of Texas. The state contributes for staff to the retirement system. Instead of sending us a check for it and then us turning around and sending it right back to them for the retirement, they just have us book an entry that books their revenue that is if they sent us the money and then we send it back to them. So that's their contribution for teacher retirement. And it's for all staff, but it's called the Teacher Retirement System. Between federal and other local, we have about 5%. Other local is everything else that you can imagine, it's investment earnings, rental income when we rent out our facilities, ticket sales at football games, all, all those kinds of things, just, just about anything else that, that we can find. Federal will include things like charges to federal funds for administrative costs. So we're allowed to charge school nutrition for payroll and HR because our offices serve all funding sources across the district. So HR hires all, all staff, no matter which funding source they come from. So we're allowed to charge those federal funds for the staff that we hire using our central office costs. All right, so that's just an overview of where our revenue comes from. Let's look at how it's changed this past year. So the Texas Legislature meets every January of an odd year. So as every other year, they get together and we spend the next four or five months monitoring bills and running numbers on how it'll impact us. This past session, January 23, seemed to go on for a very long time. They had several special sessions and we really didn't wrap up until November. Normally, the legislative session ends in May. And so they finished in May, they didn't get all the work done, the governor called them back multiple times. We wrapped up in November. So it was a record year. The state had 26% more revenue than the year before. They had a $33 billion surplus from the, the biennium before. So they were sitting on a lot of money and not a lot of money translated over to school districts. So here's a breakdown of how that went. The new money, they, the state allotted $18 billion for property tax relief. This is new money for the state to spend, not new money for districts to get. So when they provided that property tax relief, that meant we collected less in taxes and the state just contributed more on their side. So that really didn't change how much funding we got overall in total, it just changed who it came from. So instead of coming from property taxpayers, it came from the state. They did allot new money for safety, so 1.4 billion in the school safety allotment and for different safety grants. I'll show you on a slide in a few exactly how much money that translated to us in the safety allotment. They did have some obligations that were pre-existing laws they had to fulfill. So they had to fulfill spending on enrollment. They had a, they have a requirement to increase the golden penny yield. I'm not going to talk in depth about golden pennies at this moment, we're going to talk about those in a few minutes. But this was a requirement that they, every two years, they reset the value of those golden pennies and so they had to do that. That cost them 2.4 billion. The new instructional facilities allotment is an allotment provided to school districts who open new schools. And the state will provide extra funding for them to help them get those schools up and running. As you can imagine, it's been a while since we've had a new school, so that this funding, we didn't get anything from this funding source. This was cut a few years ago and so when they restored that funding to the previous level, this was basic, this isn't anything extra that wasn't done before, this was actually restoring cuts that they had done in prior years. The same thing's true for the instructional material allotment, that's the technology and instructional materials at 307 million there. And then the final bullet here is 588 and a half million to maintain TRS active care insurance premiums. So this did not impact us at all. As you will hear quite a bit in our next budget study session, our health insurance that we provide for employees is self-funded. The state of Texas provides an opportunity for school districts to buy their health insurance from TRS, the Teacher Retirement System. They actually run two separate health insurance programs, one for retirees and then one for participating school districts and their current employees. And so this funding is to help relieve the school districts who have their current employees getting health insurance through TRS. So it didn't apply to us. We have watched from the sidelines where those districts have seen significant premium increases from year to year. And so I would definitely say it was definitely needed for a lot of those districts because their health insurance costs, when we compare them to ourselves, are significantly higher. So we didn't see an impact to us, but it was definitely something that was needed statewide. Finally, the legislature did allot $5 billion that was adopted into their budget for additional funding for school districts. This was contingent upon a bill passing that would determine the methodology of allotting that money. So... So, that got hung up through these special sessions, and nothing passed. So no funding was allocated, and that budget amount will just go unspent in the legislature's budget for next year, for the next biennium. All right. So let's talk about how that state funding works. Revenue formulas are based on average daily attendance. We will call this ADA. This is one of those acronyms that you will hear a lot. ADA is one we use on a regular basis. So, average daily attendance. Every student is allocated $6,160. This is if they come to school every single day. How long your school year is, whether it's 175 days, 180 days. If you come to school every single day, the state will, in its revenue formula, say that student's worth $6,160. This value is hardcoded in law. And so, it will not change without the legislature meeting, voting, passing a bill to change that value. And so, that $5 billion that went unspent would have had a bill probably to change that $6,160, but nothing ever passed. And so, no additional funds were allotted. Now, the state recognizes that school districts will need additional funds to educate certain students. So they look at populations and demographics and instructional settings. And so, they'll provide additional fundings for students in certain groups, special ed, career in tech, dyslexia. I actually show you all the big populations on a slide coming up. All of this is added together to form Tier 1. So basically, when it comes to state funding and the revenue formula, there are two big buckets. There's Tier 1, and that's the very, very big bucket where most of our funding comes from, and Tier 2. Tier 2 is considered an enrichment allocation. And districts, some districts do it, and some districts do it a lot. And it depends on how many pennies a school board has adopted. And I say that statement, and it's just such an odd thing to say. Your district is enriched based off of your number of pennies. So let's talk about what that means. The state allows you to adopt these pennies to your tax rate. So you would have a slightly higher tax rate on your maintenance and operations side. And then the revenue you collect from those pennies, you're allowed, they don't have the same strings that are tied with the allotments in Tier 1. So when we talk about the Special Education allotment in Tier 1, we also have strings attied to that. We have to spend a certain percentage of that allotment on certain things servicing special education students. Makes perfect sense, right? They gave it to us for special education, so we've got to spend most of it on special education. The state allows for, they know that some of your spending can't get allocated specifically because you may have, you may spend $1,000 on something, and it may apply to special ed kids and bilingual kids at the same time. So not every allotment requires every single dollar being spent on it because they recognize that some of your spending will apply to multiple allotments. What the state does is tie most of that funding to specific things in that Tier 1. But in Tier 2, these are really opportunities for districts and the voters to decide to enrich their programs. And it doesn't have the same spending requirements as Tier 1 does. So, the state incentivizes up to the first eight cents of those extra pennies because they'll provide partial matching funds. We'll talk about how that works in a little bit. Just, you know, right now, we have five. Going out beyond five requires an election, just so you know. So let's look at how Tier 1 works and all the pieces. All these pieces work together. We've got enrollment and attendance rate, which drives our average daily attendance. And that's really the foundation for most of the funding formula. Then we have property values and the demographic and instructional settings. And they all work together to impact our Tier 1 state revenue. So let's look at what those buckets are. So these are our components. The big one, the first one, is the regular program allotment. Now, I know there are a lot of numbers on here. I'm not going to go number by number on this slide. But there are a couple of key points I want to point out. The weights here tell you how it's calculated. And so, I don't expect many people to sit down and have their calculator out to do this. But it just gives you an idea of the value the state is putting on these different groups. And it also, you can see now that we're showing multiple years, you can see our trends. So our regular program allotment is often called the basic allotment. And you can see it's trending downward for us from year to year to year. And that is directly tied to the fact that our enrollment is decreasing. And so, as our enrollment decreases or our attendance decreases, this number will decrease too. But look at our second line. Our Special Education allotment is going in the opposite direction. Our special education population is seeing growth every year. And so, we get additional funding for those students. This formula is actually very complicated. It's very specific to the individual setting of each student. And so, there is no way to make it fit into that little square on the slide. So we see this group is going up. Just to keep in the back of your mind, even though we're only required to spend about 55% of this allotment on specific special education things, we actually spend more than 100%. It's easily $75 million a year. Dyslexia is a relatively new allotment. That population is growing too. Compensatory education is for our at-risk students. And as our enrollment has declined, this allotment has declined. But it's also due to how we've collected our free and reduced meal applications over the years. Back in '21, '22, we were able to collect it with a more simple form. And now that some of the pandemic relief things have ended, we are now using the more, we have no choice to use the more complex meal applications. And so, we don't get as many people submitting those applications as we were back then. Bilingual education's another population that's still growing. You'll see career in tech is declining, as is our enrollment. And so, that is tied together. Early education is based off of K-3 enrollment, or K-5, sorry, and is geared to improving third-grade reading and math scores. Our GT allotment pretty much stays the same. It's capped at 5% of our enrollment. And so, we will, even as we have more students enter that program, it won't necessarily drive additional revenue as it's capped. So I was very proud of myself. I remember to spell out CCMR, College Career Military Readiness. So this allotment has, it's new. Since 2019, the state's really gone through a couple of iterations on how to calculate it. A lot of the stuff done in '21, '22 was really an estimate. So they're really fine-tuning how to calculate that number. So I wouldn't take the decline here to be so much of a performance issue. It's more of how the state is fine-tuning that calculation. And so, some of it will be tied to enrollment. But the earlier years from once this allotment was created, those numbers that the state gave us for that allotment were very, more of an estimate as they've learned how to gather the information. So they're relying on the college board, the military, industry-based certifications to drive that calculation. So, now we make it to school safety. We talked earlier about how the state actually, in the legislative session, provided extra funding for school safety. And you can see here in our '23, '24 projection, it's about $1 million higher than the prior year. And this is really what we've seen. So previously, the calculation was average daily attendance times $9.72. So they passed a bill this past year changing the $9.72 to $10. And they added just a flat calculation of $15,000 per campus. And so, that netted us about $1 million. And they also had quite a few requirements with that, safety money. And we've talked about those before with our safety specialists. That is a part of that safety where you need to have someone on every campus. Moving on to transportation. It's based off of mileage, so fairly consistent there. And there's a couple of other smaller allotments. We'd be here all night if we talked about every line on our summary of finance with the Texas Education Agency. But as you can see, overall, our total cost of Tier 1 is declining as our enrollment declines. But we definitely have some populations that are increasing. All right. So how does it all work? So, I always call it an entitlement because that's basically, the state calculates what you're entitled to. And then, they decide how to fund it. And the state always funds with property taxes first. So, you've all seen me do the cup thing, right? So this is my electronic drawing of a cup. I had to use the default thing in the thing. I can't draw, so this is it. So this is property taxes. We'll fill the cup first. And then the state comes in and makes up the difference. And so, when they pass property tax relief, the red portion's going to go down, and then their portion's going to go up. And so, but our entitlement is completely based off of that funding formula and all those allotments we just talked about. And the mix comes down to whatever we're going to collect in property taxes, and then the state chips in the rest. If we were to get to the point, and we've gotten close in the past, where our property taxes, what we collect exceeds our entitlement, then that extra funding that goes over is going to have to go back to the state. So that is called recapture. And we have gotten very close this past year. If they hadn't passed this property tax relief, we would have been getting really close. But at this point in time, the property tax relief definitely helped push that off a few years. So that's Tier 1. Let's talk about Tier 2. So basically, the state has in code a dollar amount that they say the Tier 2 penny is worth. And it's a flat rate times WADA. So don't you just love, here's a new acronym. We talked about ADA. Well, WADA is weighted ADA. And that weighted, that weight comes from all those allotments and that column that had weights on it that we just walked through. So basically, to calculate WADA, weighted everyday, every day, weighted average daily attendance, you take that total dollars and you divide by your average daily attendance, and that gives you your weighted average daily attendance. And so, to calculate your Tier 2, you take that rate that's set in code times that weighted average daily attendance, and that's how much you can collect there. And your pennies, whatever you collect from your pennies, funds that first, and then the state chips in the difference. So they're providing that, it's a guaranteed yield, is that rate. And then, they take your tax collections and anything that's left over that your tax collections doesn't fulfill up to that guaranteed yield, we're back to the cup. The state will do the difference. And so, they calculate that guaranteed yield by whichever district is the 96% wealthiest district in the state. And whatever they can collect with a penny of tax is what they set that guaranteed yield to be. That's a lot of math. What's important to remember is that for the, this is what happens with the first eight cents, is that guaranteed yield. And so, they're going to provide us partial matching funds up until whatever that number is, that WADA times that guaranteed yield. And they're making sure that we can collect as much as the 96 wealthiest district in the state. We're nowhere close to the 96. So it always drives extra funding for us. Districts can be anywhere from 0 to 17 extra pennies in this Tier 2 enrichment. So we have five. If we were to go over five, we'd have to get voter approval. These five were done as the state gave school boards the authority to take those five. And the first year, there was massive, this is late 2000s. Back in the day, school districts' tax rates were sitting about $1.50. And right now, we're just over $1. They took, the state required everybody to compress from $1.50 to $1. And then they said, but you can adopt four pennies for enrichment. And so, school boards, for the most part, elected to do that. Not all of them then. And then in 2019, when they passed some school funding bills, some massive reform in 2019, they said, oh, school boards can go and get another penny. And so, that required a unanimous vote. And Northeast approved that. And so, we're sitting at five. But anything after that, the voters have to approve. So you'd have to call an election to do that. So just to kind of break out how these funding components match up with the tax rate. So, looking at our '23, '24 tax rate. The district's had a tax rate at just over 101. I love how we have partial pennies in the tax rate. I'm always like, I understand that it all evens out and rounds out and all that stuff, but it just, I just can't cut a penny in half. So, we go out four digits for taxes. Tier 1 is that formula entitlement. We did the big chart that had all the buckets. And the state calculates how much you can get your entitlement. They tell us what tax rate to use for that. And then the state makes up the difference, right? So in August, the state will tell us what that rate should be. We have an estimate now, but it's still a really rough estimate. The state, every year, sets a maximum that no district will go over. But remember, they're going to make up the difference. So whatever we don't collect in taxes with using that rate, if our entitlement's more, the state's going to give us the difference. If our entitlement is less, because our tax base, you know, for districts whose tax base is so huge, then they have to send the money back. Tier 2 is our enrichment. And so, these are those five pennies that we're talking about. And they'll provide matching funds up to eight pennies. So any district that's gone and gotten eight, they match those first eight. Some districts are beyond eight, so they get extra funding, and it's a different rate for that. Each penny for us is worth about $9 million, and you have to have an election. So the 6605 is set by TEA. The 5 was adopted in multiple terms from the board. And that gives us our Maintenance and Operations tax rate of 7105. And then we have the Interest in Sinking tax rate. That's 30 cents currently. It's the pay debt payments on construction bonds that voters approve through a bond election. And so, together, that makes up our total tax rate. And let's talk now about how the property tax timeline works and what our next year's property taxes look like. So, each year, tax timeline kind of starts in January. Appraisal districts use January 1 as the date of ownership, basically. And they'll appraise properties in January through April. New homeowners will submit exemptions for their homestead exemption. And then in April to May, they'll start notifying homeowners and commercial property, all property owners, of their appraised values. So, most people would have gotten that right at the end of April. The property owners have until May 15 to file a protest. So if they see something wrong in that appraisal value, then there's a lot of great resources on the Bear County Appraisal District's website. I highly recommend it. If anybody ever... If anybody ever comes to you with a question about their appraisal value and those kinds of things, all that stuff is taken care of by the appraisal district. So Northeast has no role in what that appraisal value is. The appraisal district takes care of that. And so, but they have a great resource page that really helps homeowners and commercial property owners to find all those how to protest and all those kinds of things. And so, so they file a protest if they have a problem with their appraisal value. And then May through July, the appraisal district has an appraisal review board and they hear protests all throughout. They don't get every single protest heard within their, within that timeframe, but they get most of them done each year. The chief praiser over at Bexar Appraisal District has to certify appraisal values by July twenty-fifth. And basically, that means that they've got to be ninety percent complete. And so they can do a certification with ninety percent complete and a ten percent certified estimate or ninety-five percent complete. So that means most of the protests are taken care of. But you can imagine that some of our commercial property owners have massive amount of money in real estate. And so when they get their property tax bill, a lot of the commercial property owners will hire a firm to help them protest their values because it saves them substantially. And so some of these will actually take a while to process and to get through the system. So at the end of July, we should be substantially certified and the appraisal district will send us values that they have certified as being substantially complete. And then we wait for TEA. And once we get the go-ahead, school boards and the other taxing entities will adopt a tax rate. That gets sent over to the tax assessor collector, who then sends out tax bills at the beginning of October. And then payment is due January thirty-first to the tax collector assessor.
So Susie, the values go up. They set the tax rate. But just because the values are going up doesn't mean we're gonna get that difference. Remember, we're just gonna get less from the state. So there's a cap. So if you can remember anything, it doesn't matter what your values are doing. The state is gonna keep us, so.
That's right. It's the cup.
Because that's, that's the cup. And I just want to make sure, because I mean,
We're gonna hit on.
Taxes might be going up, the values are going up, but we're getting more in property taxes, but the state is just gonna reduce what they used to give us.
Yep.
Just want to clarify that, just.
We'll cover it again.
I know, I just want to mention.
No worries. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, we get preliminary values at the end of April. Now, mind you, people are still filing protests through May fifteenth. So Bexar County Appraisal District will send us preliminary values. We don't get certified values until July twenty-fifth, but we have these preliminary numbers. And remember, like even now, from month to month, these values will still change as they get through, because some of these may get to courts and lawsuits. And so it's constantly changing. But we're gonna take these preliminary values that we received in April and estimate what we think July will be. So what, that's what we've done. So we took our Aprils that are, still don't have all the protest in them and we're using our historical trends to figure out what we think certified values will be. So we adopt a budget using preliminary values as our guide. That's one of the downfalls of being a June thirty, July first fiscal year district is that we don't have certified values. So it, but as Dan just reminded us, our total is based off of our number of students in those allotments. And so it's just changing the mix between property taxes and the state. When we got our preliminary values this year, Bexar County shared this lovely slide with us, so I thought I would share it with you, about residential sales prices in Bexar County. So this is not just Northeast. This is all over Bexar County. And as you can see, the last two years, we've seen like an increase there substantially. So values were increasing very steadily. The San Antonio real estate market was hot. People were getting multiple bids and cash bids very quickly upon listing properties. It's finally starting to settle down now that interest rates have increased. So we fi- we finally started to see the leveling off. But we were seeing double-digit increases. We would get the letter from the appraisal district and they would be like the biggest ever increase. They used words that were very descriptive about how massively fast the real estate market was growing here. And so you can see the average sales price, the orange line, grew from two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand in twenty-twenty to three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-two. And it finally just kind of leveled off in twenty-twenty-three. Now Northeast isn't quite seeing this kind of leveling off yet. I'll show you our values in a few slides. We still seem to have some increases in our values. So we're higher than this. As the county as a whole, we're above average. So for our property values for next year, we are, they're still increasing. We had record-breaking years, but it started to cool off before protest adjustments. So we, we don't know all of the protests. But what we knew at the time from those preliminary values we received in April, single-family housing rose about three-point-seven percent. Most of this increase is from the value of existing homes. So we also had some new construction there. Commercial property, because they hire big firms to help protest their property, their values right now are more, are less reliable than what certified values are. And so our preliminary values tend to swi- swing a little bit more here. They, what we have with preliminary, it rose twelve percent. Ten percent of that's an increase in existing value with one-point-four percent new construction. We tend to see them change somewhere between two and a half, four and a half percent during this protest process. And we'll start getting updates from the appraisal district the second we go June. Unfortunately, it's not, we don't get many updates before you have to adopt the budget. But again, as Dan was stating, the, it's just really a shift between who's paying our revenue, whether it's the local taxpayers or the state. So let's look at what those values look like. So our projected twenty-four, twenty-five is about seventy-three billion in appraised value. That's an increase from the prior year of three, of four percent. Homesteads have a cap on them. So a homestead's taxable value can't grow by more than ten percent from one year to the next. And so we have to back off that cap. We also back off the exemptions. And one of the big things in this most recent property tax relief passed by the state was that the homestead exemption went from forty thousand to a hundred thousand. And that actually provided our homeowners a lot of property tax relief. And so those, that cap and those exemptions, there are other exemptions too. They come off and so then we get our taxable value. So our projected, using our trends from preliminary to certified, taxable value for twenty-four, twenty-five is about fifty-seven billion or an increase of seven percent. So then we have to back off frozen values. So those are our homeowners who are over sixty-five. Their taxes get frozen. So they pay the same amount year after year, even if their values are increasing. And so once you hit sixty-five, you have to go to that wonderful webpage that Bexar County Appraisal District has, follow those resources, file the application, and then you get frozen. And so those come off and then we get our net taxable value. And once you have that value, you divide by a hundred and you multiply by the tax rate to get how much you'll get in taxes. In twenty nineteen, the state of Texas passed a bill that says school districts cannot collect more in taxes than two and a half percent over the year before. So that doesn't mean each individual home can only grow by two and a half percent. You're all thinking like, oh, my house grew by ten percent, eleven percent. Yes, it can grow, the value can grow. But the total taxes that we collect can't grow by more than two and a half percent. That means if our values are growing by ten percent, the tax rate has to come down. And this is why TEA tells us what our tax rate is for that tier one. So they will tell us, but if we just estimate using what we have here, it'd be about sixty-eight cents versus seventy-one cents from last year. And so we have to bring the tax rate down to offset property value growth when it's more than two and a half percent. And then that way, it's a mechanism the state uses to provide continuous relief to homeowners year over year. Some homeowners will still, still see their value go up to a ten, twenty percent, whatever. It won't necessarily mean that they're only going to pay two and a half percent more because it's all set in total for the district. So some are gonna go up, some are staying flat, some may go down. And so district-wide, it's capped at two and a half percent. But individuals may see very different things. So they're gonna cap us at a rate that only gives us two and a half percent more than the year before. TEA will provide that to us this summer. And then in usually September, you'll adopt a tax rate. So we typically get the rate from TEA in August. You adopt a tax rate in September. And TEA is going to look at our certified values from July twenty-fifth. And that's what we'll use. So this projection shows that we'll get eight-point-seven million more in maintenance and operation taxes. Does that mean we're gonna get eight-point-seven million more in revenue? No. It means the state's going to reduce how much they give us by eight-point-seven. So the cup stays the same. The cup's based off of the formula. And then we'll get a little bit more in taxes and they'll give us a little bit less. So it's, it's, it's just shifting who's paying the bill. And so it, HB three is the bill that did the limit in twenty nineteen. So our districts will, our, our revenue will remain flat in a relationship to their property taxes. So the property taxes will go up, but the revenue will be flat because the state's just going to reduce it. I know I said that about same thing about three different ways there. But it's one of the things that, especially as a board member, your neighbors will get their tax bill and they'll come knocking on your door and be like, hey, my tax bill's three hundred dollars more than last year. What are y'all doing with the money? Well, the answer is, what is the state doing with the money? Because they're gonna reduce how much funding we get and the benefit really goes to them.
And there's a lot of things you're all gonna remember. I think I misspoke earlier. But anyway, there's no inflationary adjustment. Back in the good old days, we used to have a C of the Y, a cost of index. We used to get more money. But remember, now sixty-one, sixty, I mean, that's what you get. There's no adjustment that we're gonna get because of inflation or whatever. So that's another thing that y'all are gonna be able to remember. Is that right, Audrey?
Yes. So that sixty-one, sixty, which is how much there is in the funding formula for each student, is in law. And so it can't change unless they pass a bill to change it. And so it really, it really defines the size of the cup or of our total revenue. And so that, that has no automatic trigger. And so we've had fifteen percent inflation in the last four or five years and our revenue rate has stayed the same. And so those legislative sessions are important because that's where, that's the only avenue to change that value. So as, as Dan mentioned, there used to be some adjustments. They took that out a few years ago. And so now we're just dependent on those legislative sessions to drive that. But let's get back to how our, our property values, the, the different types of ho- things that make up that value. So the types are single-family homes. So the bulk of our district, sixty percent, is made out of six, single-family homes. Then we have about twenty-three percent commercial, eleven percent multifamily residential, and then the rest is everything else under the sun. It's always funny each year. I, I, it's the same slide from year to year. I haven't changed these numbers in a while. So we are really consistent in our makeup. Now, we don't have massive growth anymore as the district's boundaries were fairly well-built out. There are still a few, you know, places where if that piece of land ever sells, a lot of homes could go there, here, or there. But we don't have the massive amount of growth that we had in the early two thousands. But even then, these percentages, we, we've stayed pretty consistent the entire twenty years I've been here. So this is a pretty decent mix. A lot of districts struggle in the sense that they have a lot of oil and gas. Those values tend to really swing. The homes here are pretty consistent. We just see more and more homeowners becoming frozen. We definitely are an aging district. And so the rumors on the street are that baby boomers are not selling their homes and downsizing as previous generations did at the same rate. And so some of those houses are, are staying and we're seeing our frozen values increase because our population ages into that category. But as you can see here, going back to our talk before about average home price, our average home market value. So this is again, before those protest adjustments have all come through. We're looking at three-hundred-and-seventy thousand for our average home price. And that's up from three-fifty-eight. That's a pretty pricey house, in my opinion, for a young family. So we definitely are above average in Bexar County and continue to see this, our, our residences grow in, in value. So definitely something to, to keep in mind as we're looking to the next few slides with our enrollment.
Yep. Susie, the, so the, I'm sorry, let me back up one. I think what, what struck me here was the median home, the average sales price, right? Versus us, you can see we're up quite a bit more, about thirty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
And so that's, that's that piece is that our, our homes are just worth more here. And I think when you look at those prices in Bexar County, a lot of Bexar County, I happen to be down near Texas A&amp;M, San Antonio. It's a lot of new homes in that. That, our home value at three-seventy isn't for a new home. This is for existing homes that have been around for quite some time. And so I, I, I think, you know, we've talked about this, or at least three of us have up here. This is one of those pieces about new families or young families. Because when they're looking at a home like that, Miss V, you and I have talked about it. You know, you go behind Lee High School and you take a look. I mean, they're buying those homes at that and then they're pumping a lot of money into them to, to get them up. So i- it's just one of those variables that are out there that we continue to watch. Sorry, Susie.
No, absolutely. So switching gears now. As we talked about that tier one revenue and we talked about how it's calculated using average daily attendance, it's very important to, to look at attendance as it's, it's a serious driver in our funding formula. The bright green line is our twenty-three, twenty-four attendance rate. This is each year by six weeks. The top three lines were before the pandemic and then partially when we, students were remote. And so there were a lot of, to get a credit for attendance during that window, it was much easier than going from class to class to class. And so it was logging in, those kinds of things. And so those prior years and leading up to that time period, we really averaged about ninety-five percent. And you can see the, the cluster of those lines around ninety-five percent, ninety-five, ninety-five and a half. That was pretty normal for Northeast and we were pretty consistent for years. Then after the pandemic, you can see habits have changed. We were really excited to see the improvement from twenty-two, twenty-three was better than twenty-one, twenty-two. And we really started off twenty-three, twenty-four trending better than the prior year. You can see that green line was following the same trend as the blue line, which is twenty-two, twenty-three. And we were slightly above. Then January hit. The fourth, sixth weeks is, is you can see, it regularly dips. And that is the heart of flu season every year. My doctor claims that the flu shot did not have the variant that was very prevalent in my neighborhood. So you can see, we also have bad weather. So when we have bad weather days, we have poor attendance. There are lots of reasons for attendance, but as you can see, we've had several Januaries where that dip happened. And that dip happened in twenty-three, twenty-four for us. And so fifth, six weeks came real close to coming back to last year. Six, six weeks, I don't have numbers yet for that that completed six weeks as we're still in school. But some positive signs in that we started out the year with those first three, six weeks higher than the prior year. To keep in mind, about a one percent swing in attendance drives about four million dollars in additional revenue. So it is very important. During the legislative session, there was a lot of discussion from school districts to legislators asking for a change. Because even though we've seen this decline is statewide and then there are districts around us who have been hit much harder by a change in attendance. And so we're still above average when we compare ourselves to neighboring districts. So nobody wants to see a decline, but it, but we've been hit a little less hard than some districts. The, during the session, a lot of districts were asking legislators to change that funding formula from average daily attendance to enrollment because this has been a big impact across the state. And and basically, when the state sees this kind of change across the board, it means the state doesn't have to fund as much. And so as they make up the difference, property taxes don't change based off of attendance. And so the state doesn't have to, our funding formulas all decrease when attendance goes down and the state doesn't have to contribute as much, is basically what happens. So again, just keep in mind, a one percent change in attendance drives about four million dollars in revenue. So talking about the other factor of our funding formula is enrollment. And as you can see, we peaked in twenty thirteen, fourteen at over sixty-eight thousand students. We have been seeing regular declines over the years as, and then accelerated during the pandemic. And this is competition from charters during the comp, during the pandemic. We actually saw a lot of homeschools and co-ops and virtual schools pop up. This increased competition is still driving, you know, enrollment loss within the district. And the other things to keep in mind, we we definitely are seeing a statewide trend and definitely here on declining birth rates. So as we have bigger classes graduating, we have smaller classes coming in to next, to, you know, to replace them. So your senior class leaves and then lower birth rates, five years out, you end up with smaller kindergarten classes. We've, this has been a statewide trend too. The state as a whole is seeing enrollment declines and so we're seeing it around Bear County quite a bit too. When we look at how enrollment changes, we also find ourselves with campuses that are not as utilized. So we can compare our capacity of each campus with their enrollment. So when we look at today's campuses, so this is enrollment from May fifteenth, I think, it's just the other day, versus the capacity of each campus. So we have three high schools over seventy-five percent capacity, so they're pretty full. No middle schools are over that percentage and six elementaries are over seventy-five percent. Most of our campuses are in the fifty to seventy-five percent range. So four high schools, eleven middles, and thirty-one elementaries. But we do have three middle schools and nine elementaries that are below the fifty percent capacity. So we do have room in our facilities. We, just a disclaimer here, we do combine Legacy High School and ISA because they're on the same campus. And then if we look at our projections, so bear in mind, projections are historical trends. We'll see an increase with our below fifty percent. So we'll have a few more elementaries end up in that category if the enrollment projections are accurate. So we'll update in the fall once we get actual enrollment. But basically, we calculate how many students a campus can hold using their classroom and cafeteria space. So some campuses will have more classroom space than cafeteria space. But you you get limited by whichever number is smaller and that becomes your capacity. Because if you can feed more kids, then you have room to teach them, that doesn't do you any good. So it's still the number of kids that you can teach. But if you, and the vice versa, true, you know, so if you can teach more kids, but you can't feed them all, then your capacity is based off of the cafeteria. All right. So that pretty much summarizes our revenue situation. We talked about all the big pieces, right? We talked about enrollment and attendance. We talked about the funding formula and we talked about property taxes. So let's look just around at our neighborhood here and see how our other districts around us can compare. So this first slide is the twenty-two, twenty-three general fund revenue per average daily attendance for all the neighboring districts. And everybody's looking at Alamo Heights and you're like, let's do what they're doing. The problem here is they have to give a good percentage of this back. They are in recapture. And so recapture isn't reflected in this revenue number. It actually gets reported out to TEA through a different mechanism. And so they are actually sending about a third of their property tax collections back to the state. So don't get too excited about them. It it looks like an anomaly, but it's an anomaly in that they collect a lot more in taxes than what their entitlement calculates as. You can see districts around us, we all tend to hit the same kind of area. Some districts will have more funding per ADA because they will have more kids in those allotments that drive the extra funding. So their at-risk population is bigger or their special education population is bigger. And so we'll see that they will drive more revenue on ADA versus that. Everybody has the same formula. The differences will also be how many tier-two enrichment pennies you have. So those golden pennies. And so that will drive, because that's part of your total revenue, so that will drive some of these differences between districts. And so for that, we have it listed for you here, how many districts in our area have adopted the, or gone out and had an election and gotten those extra pennies that drive the extra revenue. And so New Braunfels ISD is the most recent one to do it. They went and did an election in November for three additional pennies. Comal had done one recently in Alamo Heights were the two before it in the last most recent couple of years. Some of the districts, as soon as they were able to, went out and and got the extra revenue. And so they've been with it for a long time. The state, it's all over the map in the state. So, you know, there are a lot of districts still at five pennies. I think it was just in the paper about Judson, talking about going after those extra pennies. So as the legislature doesn't provide extra funding, it's definitely something that grows in popularity with districts because it's one of the few avenues. And since the funding formula is locked in code and can only be changed with the passage of a bill by the legislature, your enrollment would have to increase, your attendance would have to increase for you really to drive extra revenue. Or you would have to go after some of these pennies to drive additional revenue. Those are your only other mechanisms. All right, another thing to point out is that not everybody has the same reserves. So fund balance is basically your reserves. A lot of people will call it a savings account. Accountants tend to get touchy because it may not necessarily translate to cash in bank. But it is a reserve of prior year's revenue being greater than expenditures. And so for the most part, districts tend to be, and like you can see, we're all kind of in a general area. But you definitely have some districts that are real anomalies. And so they're, they either are sitting on large reserves or hardly any reserves. And so it changes over time. ESER is a driver. So this data is from twenty-two, twenty-three. And districts during this timeframe had ESER funding. So that was the federal stimulus packages that were allowing districts to offset some of their normal operating costs in the federal funds. And they were able to set more reserves aside. And so you can see here how how we compare to our neighbors. It's just important to remember, as we start to see districts across the state and in our general area, they are going to be making decisions and they always make the news. Some of these districts, like the slide before this with the pennies, have access to more revenue from that aspect or they're sitting on bigger reserves from that aspect. So it's important to remember that even though we all have the same funding formula, we're not all in the exact same financial situation. And so decisions will be different in each district based off of all those factors. All right. So this is always one of my favorite things to talk about. I I don't know if it's because I get hungry around this time or if it's that we have such a great program. I think it's because we have such a great program. So you will adopt three funds. Debt service, are you okay? Debt service and school nutrition and the general fund. Debt services, we'll talk about it in a future meeting. It's just to pay off the debt. There's very rarely anything exciting happening there. But school nutrition, so important for the district. They have a forecast and a preliminary budget here. So just bear in mind, they always get to go first at these budget meetings. We haven't even talked compensation, that's the next meeting. So they prepare their numbers and then we'll come back and revise these after, you know, talking compensation and stuff. So this, this really is a preliminary budget for them. Their forecast for twenty-three, twenty-four is total revenue about thirty-nine million. Twenty-four, twenty-five, they're looking about thirty-six, nearly thirty-seven million, a decline of about two and a half million. As you can see here, between looking at the percentages of where the money comes from. So local, that typically is just what they collect for charging for meals. So some of our students can eat for free, some can eat at a reduced price, and then some have to pay. It it all comes down to the meal applications when they apply and what their income range for their family is. And so the federal government sets that criteria. The federal government will then reimburse us for all the meals served. And so for a student who eats for free, they'll reimburse us at one rate. For one who eats at a reduced price, they'll reimburse us at a different rate. And then they reimburse us as a tiny bit for those paid meals too. And so as you can see, so different than the general fund where most of our income comes from property taxes. Most of the income in the school nutrition fund is federal and that's from those reimbursements. So about seventy percent for twenty-four, twenty-five. And the state does a little bit in commodities. And then most, the the rest of it from the local is, again, the payments for the meals. So this decline primarily related to declining enrollment. We are adding another CEP campus. This is the Community Eligibility Program. So we're allowed to enroll certain campuses into the program and it allows every child at that campus to eat for free. So it doesn't matter whether they qualify for a free meal or a reduced meal or for no assistance. Every child at that campus can eat for free. And this, the reimbursement rates and the formula is a little bit different than the normal calculation on the on the per meal. So our campuses with the highest need end up in this program. And it really is just a beneficial thing for for everyone to be able to eat. And we began this in twenty sixteen, so we've been doing it for a while. We started it almost. We're now going to add a forty-eighth campus. The ACE is the Academy of Creative Education. Did I get that right? I I've been calling it ACE for so long, I forgot it had a name. Because otherwise I would have put it on here for you. Sorry about that. I I actually went through the slides looking for acronyms and missed that one. So, so yes, so that'll go, that'll go from forty-seven to forty-eight. We're declining enrollment, so we we expect revenue to decline. When, these are our meal prices and what we plan for next year. There are certain times that we have to raise our rates. There's actually rules in place that say, when the federal reimbursement goes to a certain rate, then you have to increase your charging for for meals. And so there's a formula that we have to check each year. So this may change depending on the results of that. But five dollars and ten cents is a great price for lunch. And Wednesday is enchilada day at MacArthur, is that right? Yeah, and so they they post those pictures on the on the Facebook and they look really good. And they taste really good too. So I don't, I I know how they taste, they taste great. So five dollars and ten cents is a is a great price for those enchiladas. And as you can see, breakfast is actually very affordable too. Here's our preliminary expenditures. As you can see, about half of the budget is for staff, salaries and benefits. We have some contracted services. The other big component is food and supplies. And one of the unique things about the school nutrition services funds is that the feds won't let you compile big reserves. So as we were looking at other districts and we saw some of them have much bigger reserves than we do, the feds aren't gonna let you, they keep giving you money, so you can't keep just stockpiling it. So they have a requirement for you to actually spend some of that down. So as you see capital expenditures growing here, it's it's to help spend down their reserves. Not that the capital expenditures aren't necessarily needed. It's it's true, we're redesigning a couple of serving lines. Very, very beneficial for those cafeterias to be more efficient and everything. And so it's just important to realize that we don't have the same rules in the general fund as what, because there's a lot more federal oversight on this program. So. So our food cost will be lower next year due to, you know, serving fewer meals. Our staffing is actually improving. So a few years ago, we were really struggling filling vacancies and a lot of cafeterias were working very hard to bridge that gap. And so our staffing numbers are getting better. And so we'll technically have higher payroll costs as we are better staffed. We'll increase those capital projects to spend down our reserves. And so this note about commodity funding is kind of funny because right before the meeting started, Ms. Glosson, our Executive Director of School Nutrition, told me that they just got an email telling us that this is going back up. So the state just recalculated it. And so we'll end up getting, commodities are basically, the state gives us an allotment and we can purchase food from that allotment. And so they had decreased what they were estimating our commodity allotment to be. But then this afternoon, they just told us, is going back up. So this note and these numbers will get adjusted. So this note will go away. Again, that's why it's a preliminary budget. So, but we had, do have some good news that this has been put back. So, all right, so overall, you can see we're actually decreasing fund balance here. We need to do that. The the feds don't like us to have too much in reserves. And so over the last two years, they have to file us a plan with Texas Department of Agriculture. They're the ones that really oversee the school nutrition services program. Most of what you're used to dealing with is TEA overseeing all the programs. This is one of those fund programs that gets a little bit of TEA and a lot of the Texas Department of Agriculture. So they have kind of like two bodies that they have to report to. And in it, they have to file a plan saying we're gonna decrease our reserves, our fund balance by these types of projects and such. And so this is our preliminary budget for them. Obviously, we'll adjust these as we go through our conversations. So next time we meet, we will be talking about compensation. So this right now doesn't have any impact of possible compensation. There are certain things that are not in that budget yet because those decisions haven't been presented to you yet. So before we adopt, we'll bring you a revised budget. We'll have that commodity number improved and make any tweaks we need to make to this budget based on decisions and such. All right. So this gets us through the meat of the presentation, our key takeaways that that we always want to drive, that just have in your back pocket to talk about. Our increased property values will not necessarily will not increase our overall revenue. So just like we've said several times tonight, that cap, it'll just change who's giving us the money. That two and a half limitation is on our overall tax collections. Homeowners may still see an increase over the two and a half percent. We really need, we point this out to you every year because especially when that law passed, homeowners got their bill and they're like, wait, or they got their appraised value and they're like, wait a minute. I thought this was going to be capped at two and a half percent. And then you explain, no, no, the tax rate's going to go down, so your tax bill will change. And and even that, a homeowner will still may see an increase more than two and a half percent because the the limit is on what the district collects across the whole district. And you'll definitely have all these pockets and movement. And so it's definitely important for when those homeowners are frustrated with their bill to remember, we don't set the appraisal value. TEA has more control over her tax rate than we do. And when we get the extra money, you know, the bill has Northeast ISD all over it, that actually ends up being a benefit to the state more than it is to Northeast because they're just going to reduce their contribution.
Homeowners are capped though. When you look at your, if you have some constituents that might say, hey, wait a minute, but I do have a cap. There are some caps. So if you go up too much, there's a cap every year until you catch up to your appraised value. So I'm not sure if that's happened to anybody. But like Susie was talking about, there is a cap on individuals on how much their property value will go up.
So your individual can't, from one year to the next, that home can't go up by more than ten percent in taxable value? And so what happens is in a year that your home value increased by twelve percent, it it sits in a cap and then it waits for a year that it didn't grow by ten percent. And then that cap gets added back into your bill. So you eventually end up paying for it. You just can't suffer more than ten percent growth one year to the next as an individual homeowner. Finally, for school nutrition, we're spending down our reserves and we're adding an additional CEP site at our ACE Academy. And so that'll allow all those students to eat for free. All right. What questions do we have?
Thank you, Ms. Lockhorn. Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. Does anybody have questions they'd like to go through? Ms. Landry?
Hi, I do have a question. Just one question and thank you so much. You do a great job. It's amazing. So the interest in sinking the thirty cent on the tax rate, that's not long term, right? That changes as we pay down the debt. Is that how that works?
So that tax rate is set by the board and we bring it to you at adoption. It, we tend to leave that tax rate relatively stable because otherwise it's going to go crazy up and down from year to year. And if you leave it steady, anything extra you collect, you can pay off debt early and save the taxpayers in the long run. And so it tends to stay fairly stable when you purposely let it sit to pay off tax taxes. I've been talking about taxes for so long. Debt, paying off debt early. And so at thirty cents, last year, we kept it the same and we were able to pay off debt early. And so that ends up saving your homeowners two headaches. One is a volatile part of your tax rate. And the other is, long term, we save them a lot of interest when we pay debt off early.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Cox?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Susie. I really appreciate it. Mine is about the golden pennies. So just so I understand, in order for that rate to go above five, that takes a ballot on a November election.
Yes. So we didn't really, back in the fall, and of course, you weren't here. Back in the fall, the board asked for just an understanding of how going after those other golden pennies would look like. It has to be a November ballot. So we're at the max that you can do as a board. You have to go to the voters at an election. The requirement is November. The timeframe is actually kind of very hectic for all of it. So you have to do certain things by certain timeframes. The one thing that is really unique to it is that we have to do an efficiency audit. So we have to hire an auditor to come in and evaluate and give us an audit result to post along with the election materials. And so it doesn't sound like the districts who have been through it. Your annual audit is actually fairly intense to begin with. And so it doesn't sound like it's that much more than what you're used to going through. And we get audited from so many different places. It's not something that's super stressful. But it's unique. So when the legislature decided that voters had to weigh in on those pennies, they decided they wanted a a third party to come in and and look at the district and issue an opinion on to that, you know, to provide feedback to the voters on that election.
Okay. And so those those extra pennies could only be used for tier one or enrichment?
So those extra pennies aren't, it's tier one that has ties to certain populations like special ed. So that special ed has to be spent that way. These pennies are in tier two that have no ties to anything. So they can be used in any which way the the district needs.
So for salaries? Could they be used for salaries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
What does an audit, let's say we hired an outside auditor. What would something like that cost the district to do?
It doesn't seem super, I mean, okay, so my my relative perspective may be different than most because our budget is about six hundred million. So I'm going to say it doesn't cost a lot, but most people would be like, it's a lot of money. You're talking about our annual audit, which is much bigger, is in the thirty thousand dollar range? So you're only looking at like a ten thousand dollar, fifteen? I mean, I haven't quoted this. I haven't asked, but we're only talking low five digits.
See, I've had a lot of people come up to me and ask me this one question. Why haven't we had an outside auditor come in and look at us as far as efficiencies? What can we do to improve our efficiencies? I know we run a really lean, mean machine. But what could we do? Because I know we're facing this huge deficit and that's frightening. So is there, you know, something, you know, do we have plans on, you know, how we're going to reduce this deficit? You know, do we, because, you know, when you bring us the budget, I'd really like to see that kind of, you know, go down. So. But.
I'm looking at Dr. Micah. He's just. No, it's okay.
Go ahead, Susie. We're going to bring that to you. That that's what's coming. So you're you're going to see what what we have been doing and working on. And again, this is why, if you'll recall, Ms. Villarreal, I brought in an external auditor to audit our facilities. This is why we've been looking at secondary staffing. It's it's, there are some other things that have been in progress. So at an upcoming budget study session, you will see some of the ways that we've already saved some money. And again, that facility audit will be in here very shortly, at which time then we'll start going through that as well.
Or can I, because I've had people say, well, you're just doing nickels and dimes. You're not really cutting anything. Will it be something that we can show our community that we're really making inroads into this?
Ms. Villarreal, I think it's the next budget study, right?
Yes.
You're going to see millions in dollars. Millions, not not pennies. It will be millions. Okay?
Ms., you gotta remember, eighty-seven percent of our budget is salaries. So the thirteen percent, you know, it's quite a bit of money. So trying to squeeze that, but on top of personnel, I mean, we're labor intensive. So that's that's a big number.
Now, I will point out, some of our plans take multiple years. And so in these earlier years, we're doing a lot more analysis and planning. And so some of these things will take years to implement. And so the benefit may not make it to the bottom line next year, but you're looking at the next year. You know, it it's a long process. When when you're asking about hiring a firm to help, the efficiency audit is really reflective on our financials. It's not, it's not going to look at some of the nitty gritty of some of the things that we're getting into. The struggle will be to find experts in so many different areas, right? So because we, we're a big organization and finding some kind of firm that could come in and find, like, you literally have to find experts in a particular area. And it's not easy to find somebody who knows so much about everything that they can come in and and help those things. So we're literally taking topics, programs, one at a time. And, you know, you've gotten presentations about ham recently, those kinds of things. We take these programs one at a time and and sometimes combine together because they're interlapping or whatever. But we learn and grow and study and 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 then a lot of what you will see will be pilots because making the change, you've got to make sure it's working through the system the right way. And so.
And Ms. Villarreal, look, when, because what I do is I study the terrain, right? So we're looking at a thirty-eight million, which is about a five percent deficit, correct? Roughly. I I know y'all hate it because I don't get precise, but it's roughly about five percent. Okay? There will be districts around us that will run over ten percent deficits. And so, you know, there, this is kind of becoming the wild, wild west when it comes to budgeting and it's really hard for people to understand because, well, how did that district give a a raise? Well, they passed a TRE last year and so they're able to do something. Well, why is this one going to do it but going to run a thirty million deficit, which happens to be about ten percent deficit for them? Well, they passed a TRE, promised their people they were going to. They only did one and they have to do something else. So there's a lot of different pieces. That's why, you know, it 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 is, look, it is a lot of money and we we are. But we have continued to work and will will continue to whittle away. Some of these things, though, again, is like when we went out to our community and spoke about dual language, you know, we heard pretty, pretty resounding, like, hey, that's not where we want to do it. So sometimes the best laid plans will come out. We'll listen to our community, which is part of our our responsibility, only to hear that's really not what we like. Okay, well, then we'll go back to a drawing board and we'll select something else. And so that's what we're doing, is being very methodical and purposeful about how we attack it rather than knee jerk reactions. And that's really because, and Mr. Byer, you mentioned this to me before you became president, so it was a while ago. But but you said, you know, this is what, I forget, you sent me a newspaper article and you said, this is what Susie and you and Dan warned us about, was was these kind of cuts. And this is what you said, if you use these one-time monies for ongoing costs, we just didn't do that. And we banked some to build up our reserves to get to this point. Now, look, did we know it? No, we didn't, you know, shake the magic eight ball and let's say to do this, right? But but history told us usually something bad's coming. So we prepared for it. And and you saw it through, you know, I think it was hundreds of people being cut in a in a district. You know, what you're seeing is some folks didn't do some things that I think they should have done. We did them. And so it put us in a in a position that we can take a methodical and very calculated approach to to saving these funds without having to do knee jerk reactions. Because as Mr. Villarreal said, and we'll share you some stuff, because I've been going around talking to teachers and really educating them on this. Eighty-seven percent is in in people, right? But when you take that money and you look at, okay, so eighty-seven percent of our budget's in people, but how much of that are those in that people budget are at the campus? It's eighty-seven percent. Let that sink in for a second. Eighty-seven percent of of the people budget is is at the campus. So, you know, we we can see all of these things. But again, it's it's being, making sure, one, you all know, two, to talk to our community about it. And three, to build a plan that's not knee jerk, that we have to start doing things we don't like because that's when we stop listening to our community. And it's important that we listen to them and value their input and use that in which to guide our thinking. But eighty-seven percent's at the campus. And you're going to see at an upcoming session how even our our administrative costs have lowered again. Because we continue to find ways at the overhead to to reduce. You know, we can share different numbers from different districts. But the bottom line is, is, Ms. Villarreal, we are a lean, mean fighting machine, like we really are. We're running a pretty lean operation, which, but are there still ways to save money in there? Absolutely. As each, these guys over here hate every time that there's a retirement or something because I'm like, well, let's talk about that position. And can we do? And we start to really, we are scrutinizing every single position that's over in these offices, every one of them. And at an upcoming session, you will see, not just in the last year, but in the last five years, how we've been tackling this. And I think that's what many people don't understand is, since I came in in twenty nineteen, I have been reducing these office staff by by considerable amounts. And and that has been the plan. Because I think, Mr. Jarrett, you heard, why are we starting here? Well, we didn't start. We started in twenty nineteen. And the real challenge, and you'll think, is how do we continue to get better while single-handedly shrinking, right? Well, we're doing it. We're making some some pretty neat moves. Early college, high school at MAC, right? And and we'll continue to innovate and continue to to look at ways of doing business in a very, with using our balance scorecard as its guide. And that's what gets used every day and that's what we'll continue to use.
Ms. Villarreal, you have any more questions?
No, that was answered beautifully.
And I agree with you. I think if it's coming in the next presentation or the next couple of presentations, being able to show the community, the district, like where all these things are coming from. And one, setting up the idea that these are all the challenges we have. Now, here's what we're trying to make all this work.
Yes, sir. That is at the upcoming session. You will start to see it.
And if it could be a little bit more detailed in that respect because they honestly don't believe us when we, I say, yes, it's because we gave those raises. And they look at me like I'm lying to them. And I said, I promise you, I'm not lying. This is what happened.
You're going to see it in a real detailed view, like position by position.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. I appreciate it because I really want the community to understand that we're not trying to pull some shenanigans, that this is a real thing and this is where the money went and this is why we have to do certain things. So, oh, you're so awesome. Thank you.
Questions on this side? Nope, all good. I actually had one question, if you can explain on the nutrition services, about the capital expenditures increase. And I know you talked about how the, there were some projects that started possibly carrying over. But I guess does that mean we didn't necessarily have the funds for what we wanted to do?
No.
This past year? Or is there new projects coming online that that's kind of accounting for?
The projects are spanning multiple, it is going to, they're not going to complete within that window. And when you're doing like a serving line redesign.
Right.
You really, you really want to start as soon as school lets out and get it done over the, over the summer.
Sure.
And. And it, that crosses fiscal years. So that's the one thing that drives all the accountants in every district crazy. The summer splits the fiscal year, July 1, right? And so, but you tend to do a lot of these massive projects. And so they started making these plans for these capital projects to help spend down that, it's not the only reason. I don't want it to sound like the only reason why we're doing these projects is because we need to spend down our reserves. That's not true. Like, sometimes you do a project because it's needed, it's necessary, and it improves the cafeteria. And so they develop those projects, and then part of it's gonna fall into one fiscal year, and part of it's gonna, half of it'll fall in the other. And so it just splits the year. And so they're starting them, getting it rolling now, and then it'll end up wrapping up in 24, 25.
Got it. Okay, please.
So on Slide 39, where it talks about fund balance, we're talking about fund balance for food services.
Yes, we're not talking about general fund. Yes, that's food.
And so you keep enough in reserve for several months to maintain that their budget, that budget?
Yes. But it looks nothing like what the general fund needs to look like.
And is it also two months, or what is the...
So they are capped at three months. So once they hit three months, the feds really start knocking on the door. So then you have to develop a plan to spend that down. And so for them, we're pretty flexible with what we, the minimum, they don't have a set minimum, their big deal is the maximum. And so once they hit three months, then there has to be a plan to bring it back down.
To bring it back down. So it's going down a lot?
It is.
Is that because we were over?
Yes.
Or we're just trying to find money?
No. We were over. During the, a big driver of this was, I can't believe how much, today I've talked about the pandemic already, but during the pandemic, the feds allowed districts to feed everybody for free. I don't know, you probably, even when you weren't on the board, you probably saw it in the news. And so everybody was eating for free, and we were getting reimbursements for all that. So we ended up banking a lot of money during that window, and now we need to spend it down. And so those funds need to come down. When you're getting reimbursed for everything like that, it was very unique, it hadn't happened before. It was part of the feds', you know, assistance to help relieve, you know, the pressures on families during the economic downturn and the pandemic. And so we really had accumulated significant reserves that needed to come down.
So where is that money gonna go?
It's right there in the budget, it's in these expenditures. So we will be doing, between these two years, over $8 million worth of capital improvements to our cafeterias. And that's really where the bulk of that spending is. The other is just the balance between revenue and expenses.
Yeah, and Ms. Chidji, just, I heard you say, is that because we're finding, looking for money? We're not gonna find any money in school nutrition to help offset. No, ma'am.
And we're not allowed to use their funds for operations or anything like that. And so would I have loved to take in their fund balance and use it for something else? I don't know. But it, we're not allowed. And there are certain things that the feds won't allow their funds to pay for at all. And so it's very restrictive. When the federal government is funding 70% of your revenue, they do not want you spending that money for other purposes. And so it's very restrictive to what we can do with it. And so that's why, it's actually pretty hard for them to find qualifying expenditures for those capital projects. They have to get approval from the Texas Department of Agriculture. It's fairly restrictive what they can and can't do. And so we wouldn't have been able to use that for something else, just in case anybody's wondering.
Any other questions right now? Ms. Shelton actually had a couple of questions that I'll ask for her. Staying on nutrition services, she wanted to get some clarification about the staff increase with the enrollment decrease. And I know some of that has to do with positions that we've been needing to fill for a while.
Yep, that's exactly it. And so, you know, going back to Ms. Villarreal's part, point earlier, when the board adopted that compensation package that helped drive part of our deficit, a significant part of our deficit, let me add that disclaimer. The driving force behind that was a real struggle to fill positions. So we had seen it across the board, but school nutrition was one of them. And so they really were understaffed for what they needed to do. And the compensation package, of course, helped that. And so now, now we're seeing the benefits of that, but it also means in some, you know, it also means more cost when you're filled better. When you have a higher fill rate and fewer vacancies, it costs more. And so that definitely is driving that.
The, so backing up, it's on Slide 22, where we're talking about the estimated property tax revenue. And I think she wants some clarification on where we say the projected 2024, 2025 tax revenue. If you go down to the, your M&amp;O tax rate times 100, we have the 68 point, or 68.59 cents that we're showing there. She, I think, wanted clarification, does that mean that the Tier One part of that is 63 cents, because we have five pennies? That's what she's asking.
She's spot on.
Okay. I think that was answered. And then on Slide 27, where we're talking about enrollment, I know we, I think, bring this up every year, but the magic question is, you know, what percent of that decrease might be due to graduations, people moving, people leaving the ISD for another entity, charter, private, homeschool? Do we have a sort of, you know, we don't have a, we don't have an exit interview necessarily process, but do we have some general idea of why that decrease?
So we, one thing that TEA can do for us, and they do it every year, there's a report that tells us, let me back up a second. Every year, we have to send to TEA who's in our schools and their ID numbers. And then TEA gets that from everybody, right? So they get it from charter schools, they get it from other school districts. So TEA is able to say, they can track some of the kids. So if a student leaves us and goes to Judson, then TEA knows, oh, this student left Northeast and went to another public school district in Texas. They can also tell us when they go to a charter school, because public charters are under TEA's oversight, too. If they move out of state, we're not, unless they tell us, we're not gonna be able, there's no common reporting mechanism to drive that data back down to us. If they just get homeschooled, we might be able to find out, might not. And then it, those, so we definitely can track how many graduated, and we can definitely track how many left us for another Texas public ISD or public charter. And so, but some of that data is lagging, because all wheels move slowly, and you have to wait until the fall when it's reported. And then TEA gets reported every fall, it gets completed in late January, and then TEA takes three or four months to scrub the data, clean the data, and report out the data. So for the current year, that data is just now becoming available. So...
And here's what I will add, Mr. Byer, is that for the first time, I think I've told you all this, TEA shows a decline statewide in enrollment, and that percentage almost is exactly what the state is showing, its decline. So that's something new, because for several years, well, when I first got into this position, the commissioner kept talking about enrollment growth. And now it's, as a state, he, in fact, I was on a call with him, with some other superintendents, and somebody said, oh, we're growing. And he goes, well, then you're the anomaly in the system, because most are not any longer.
And Mr. Byer, also, is the, there's a high mobility, also, and our ECODIS numbers are growing, so we're seeing a lot more mobility. And then the average cost of a home has also been driving, I think, an issue. You see some of the outlying school districts, like Medina Valley, and those are growing, but their home values are a lot, even new homes, they're building are really a lot cheaper than even our average. So, you know, the ECODIS, the high mobility, and then the cost for homes in our district is kind of partially responsible for that also.
Yeah, and I think we all recognize it's a, there's a lot of factors go into it, and I think Ms. Shelton is wanting to make sure, if we have percentages of what those things might be, it's good for all of us to know these, and say, oh, I mean, do we have something predominantly happening in one way or the other? I don't know that that's the answer, but, yeah, thank you. Any other questions that you thought of, while you have everybody here? All right. Ms. Lockhorn, thank you so much again. Appreciate it. Thank you to everybody that's started this process. We've got a few more to go. But if nothing else, item 10, adjournment, and the time is 8:57.